Good afternoon, everybody. Call to order, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Howe, Texas at, what is it? 6:01 PM. There's a quorum present. We've got two items on the agenda. First one, discuss, consider, and act upon the approval of the minutes from the meeting from December 17th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
All right. You have a second? Second. All right. All in favor? All right. And then item number two, discuss, consider, and act upon final plat for the W. Stevens addition being replat of lots 10, 12, 14, and 16, save and accept the east 10 feet of all lots, block 1, L. W. Mills addition, volume 126, page 128, D. R. G. C. T. being in addition to the City of Howe, Grayson County, Texas, containing .645 acres of land.
P&amp;Z members, congratulations on your anniversary.
No, thank you.
So this replat, to give you a brief history on it, in fact, Wade Stevens approached me a number of months ago. He had purchased some property over here on Branch Street and wanted the community to build homes and spread our upset. I told him that we could not. We didn't have any sewer taps available at the time because of capacity issues. I met with the engineer, we reviewed, and I promised him we would review the flow charts, which we did. After a few months, the engineer decided that it was okay to release those taps without obligation. He initially wanted to move forward with four lots, which wouldn't have met our acceptable standards. And I told him that he would have to come before P&amp;Z Council if they approved it. And he decided to go ahead and go with the route in which you have in front of you. So that's the history of that. So the city staff, approval from the engineer on sewer taps, and everything is approved through the engineer on replats, the city staff recommends.
Okay. All right. Pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? All right. That is it. All right. We will adjourn the P&amp;Z meeting at 6:03 PM.
I didn't have my mic on.
Well, had I had time to change, I would be in them, but I got home and I had to take my niece back to pick up her car.
Good evening there. Being a quorum present, this regular session of the Howe City Council is hereby called to an order on Tuesday, January 21, 2025, at 6:05 PM. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Texas, please remove your hats and silence your cell phones, and let's stand for the prayer and the pledges. Councilman Ingram, you will.
You will pray for me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, another opportunity to come and serve this town. Thank you for getting us through our most recent weather incident unscathed, except for the public works guys. Thank you for their service. Be with us as we go through this meeting and instilling us, again, a servitude of, an attitude of servitude, that we will make the best decisions possible for this town, and that we do everything in your name, in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. And now for our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honored for Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the duty of Texas, one state, one nation, one family, one community.
I can't hear myself. Please hear us.
Thank you. Please be seated. The city council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics not already scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not on the agenda, other than to make a statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry, or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. I did not receive any citizen comment request forms, but is there anyone that has anything that they would like to submit to me at this time? Okay. If not, we're going to move on to our mayor comments. First, I want to, on behalf of myself and the council, I want to take a moment to recognize all of our essential workers. We appreciate every one of you and all the countless hours that you dedicate to the city and to your fellow department, to the fellow departments, and to our neighbors, some of which is in the cold, wet weather. Specifically, we want to recognize our Public Works Department and your dedication to the city on January 10th, as you worked tirelessly in the whole, in the freezing, wet temperatures to restore water to the citizens on the west side of Highway 75. And we just want you all to know that your hard work does not go unnoticed. And so we just want to give you all a round of applause, really.
Can we get a picture of them?
Absolutely. We'd love to have that. Come on up, guys.
Come on up.
Council, y'all want to get a picture with them? Y'all stand up front, we'll come up to you. The Howe Hump Day Breakfast, networking breakfast, will be held on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, here in Summit Gardens, and everyone is welcome to attend. And the city council elections will be held on May 3rd, 2025. We have two expiring terms for two city council seats and one expiring term for the mayor's seat. Moving on to our consent items. These items consist of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individual by any council member making such requests prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. I'm going to read this, and then we're going to hear from our city secretary. One, discuss, consider, and act upon consent items which are marked by an asterisk. Minutes of the regular council meeting, December 17, 2024. Bills being paid for the month. Detailed check register report. Statement of revenue and expenditures. Independent financials, secured deposits, December 31, 2024. Recap and standings, December 2024. Election items. Joint election contract with Howe ISD. Notice of election, general election. Order of election, May 3, 2025. Grayson County tax assessor reports. 2024 certified annual tax report. 2025 tax roll values.
Mayor and council, we did have a couple of adjustments to the consent agenda items before you, that's being passed around, is the notice of general election, and also the order of election for May 3rd. The joint election contract with Howe ISD is a reoccurring contract, so that's not something that we need to sign. The items below that for the Grayson County tax assessor report, unfortunately, the Grayson County tax assessor did not have the 2024 certified annual tax report, so that it's not available right now, but we will include that in the next meeting's agenda, along with the 2025 tax roll values.
Do any council members want to discuss this any further?
Do we need to make a motion to make those changes before we vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to make those changes from one of us before we?
We, we talked more now, just in case someone wanted to make the change.
The motion needed.
I'll make the motion. So I'll motion to approve the consent agenda items with exceptions to the following. Joint election contract with Howe ISD, 2024 certified annual tax report, and 2025 tax roll values.
I'll second.
Okay. Sean makes the motion, Sarah makes a second. All in favor? Everyone? Anyone opposing or abstaining? None are opposing or abstaining. Motion passes. Moving on to our action items. Two, discuss, consider, and act upon the final plat for W. Stevens addition being a replat of lots 10, 12, 14, and 16, save and accept the east 10 feet of all lots, block 1, L. W. Mills addition, volume 126, page 128, D. R. G. C. T. being in addition to the City of Howe, Grayson County, Texas, containing 0.645 acres of land. This was the item that the council did recommend.
P&amp;Z recommended.
Or, not, excuse me, not council, thank you. Do you, are you going to speak any further on that?
Since my mic wasn't on earlier, I probably should.
Okay.
I'll make it brief. Kind of the same thing I sent in your packet. Mr. Wade Stevens approached the, approached me a number of months ago that he had purchased some property on Branch Street at the corner of Jones, and wanted to build some homes on that. Understandably, he was pretty upset when I told him that we didn't have sewer available for him to build homes. I promised him that we would do a flow chart study, and we did over the course of several months. After visiting with the engineer, we determined that there was enough flow for him to be able to add those, those properties on that corner. He initially came to me wanting to plat it for four small lots, and I told him that in order to do that, it wouldn't meet the SF-2 standards, he'd have to come before the P&amp;Z and council to get an approval for that, in which he decided to leave it as three lots, which do meet all of our SF-2 requirements. Engineer has reviewed the final plat, and city staff recommends approval.
Does the council wish to discuss this item any further? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky? Was that you? Okay. So Billy makes a motion to approve, Ricky makes a second. All in favor? Everyone is in favor. Any opposing or abstaining? None are opposing or abstaining. Motion passes. Item number three, discuss, consider, and act upon the renewal of the lease purchase agreement between the City of Howe and Independent Financial for the Howe Police Department for F-150 for the amount of $21,000, plus interest due February 20, 2025, and authorize city administrator Monty Walker to execute and sign all documents pertaining to the renewal. Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Sean makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor? Everyone is in favor. Anyone opposing or abstaining? None are opposing or abstaining. Motion passes. Number four, discuss, consider, and act upon the renewal of the lease purchase agreement between the City of Howe and Independent Financial for two ambulances in the amount of not over $40,000 due to, due March 10, 2025, and authorize city administrator Monty Walker to execute and sign all documents pertaining to the renewal. Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
That was Ricky. Ricky makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sarah makes a second. All in favor? Everyone? Any opposed? None are abstaining or opposing. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss, consider, and act upon a one-year interlocal agreement between the City of Midlothian, Texas, and the City of Howe, Texas, for purchasing program for Howe Fire and Rescue, which allows each party to purchase goods and services under each other's competitively bid contracts pursuant to subchapter, subchack, subchap, chapter F., chapters 271 of the Texas Local Government Code. Does the council wish to discuss this item any further? And if not, do we have a motion?
Are you wondering if you want to?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Chief Manay?
So what the interlocal agreement does is allows us to purchase on a competitive pricing plan with the City of Midlothian. We've had, our first year we did it, we were on the City of Richardson. They have extensively overused their allotments of how much they're, how many they're allowed to have, so we are now being moved over to the City of Midlothian. Same pricing, same, same kind of local agreement, we're just switching from Richardson to Midlothian.
Does council have any questions or wish to discuss this any further?
I noticed the City of Midlothian hasn't signed the agreement yet.
Yeah, they asked us to send ours and sign it, and then they'll send, they'll sign it, and then they'll send us copies to us and the boundary, which is our ordering processor.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sarah makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor? Everyone is in favor. Any opposed or abstaining? None are opposed or abstaining. Motion passes. Resolution number 2025-0001, a resolution authorizing continued participation with the steering committee of cities served by Encore, and authorizing the payment of 11 cents per capita to the steering committee to fund regulatory and legal proceedings and activities related to Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC. We will now have a public hearing for resolution number 2025-0001, allowing members of a public to speak if they should choose to do so. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak or have questions? Since we do not, we will now end that public hearing, and we will return to our regular session. Number six, discuss, consider, and act upon resolution number 2025-001. Does the council wish to discuss this item? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Sean, what's your motion for?
To approve.
Sean makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor? Everyone is in favor. Any opposed or abstaining? None are opposed or abstaining, so motion passes. Moving on to our discussion items, departmental reports. First is our Howe Police Department. Chief Sullivan?
Good evening, mayor and council. During the course of the month, we responded to 99 calls for service that includes 37 citations. We also have a new officer that starts February 3rd. Our e-citation system is supposed to be online by February 10th, which allows us to submit electronic citations to our municipal court. A record management system will be online hopefully in February, which will allow us to have Tlets and inlets in our vehicles. You may also, in that process, see a different report that'll be submitted to you once that RMS is online. It should be more informative in how we do our business, and actually, we can capture the data that we cannot currently capture. February 16th, we had our first town hall meeting, which I thought was quite successful. It also announced that we're starting our first citizens' police academy that'll take place in February, and we will start advertising and taking applications for that process. We had one terminate, or one resignation for an employee during that process of the month. During our lucky ice and snow storm, we did have to shut 75 down at our south city limits of Van Alstine, due to ice forming and a number of wrecks that we had piled up. That is it. Any questions? Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Howe Fire Department. Chief Manay?
Howe Fire Rescue had a total of 69 calls for service for the month of December, being our multiple EMS calls, fire calls, MVAs, and false alarms. We had a total of 60 hours of training marked for the month of December, so that was great training by the guys and the girls on the department. We've been called out mutual, by multiple mutual aid departments. We did have one structured fire during the ice and snow that we did end up losing the house, but no injuries or any damage to vehicles or anything like that was reported. We've got multiple, multiple certification classes going on right now through some of our members and our EMS staff for their continuing education credits that they need to maintain their certifications. We've been very busy with calls, fire season with space heaters and chimneys and fire pits, things like that are picking up, so please be cautious. And please be cautious with the weather that has been upon us and continuing to be upon us. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, too. Public Works?
Justin, you want to do this? Yeah. I don't remember what I'm on.
First of all, I want to thank Chief Manay. We're starting to see some money roll in for that EMS program. We had one week where we got $15,000, so keep up the good work and the pace there.
Wonderful.
I know that was a lot we bit off this past year, but, you know, it's good for the citizens, and it's working out. Public Works carried out 110 service calls, or service orders. Five new meters were set, and I'll talk about new meters in, in my report. One meter leak was repaired, a pothole patching, they used four yards of cold mix. 10 water main leaks were repaired, 15 disconnections for move outs, and two sewer backups. 96 hours on wells, sampling, monitoring, flushing, and reporting. 25 hours assist with leaks, 28 hours of training, assistance, direction, and planning. They're working on a chloramine letter and checklist plan. I'll talk about that as well later on. Well 4 crew to move in on Monday or Tuesday to, to pull the camera on well 4. You know, kind of the same thing we went through last year with well 2. It's not pulling as much water as it once was, so we're having to pull that out, take a look at it, see what the issue is on well 4. Well 2, we're trying, we're still trying to get a quote and a site meet on that. So that is Public Works. And now, I think it's, Michelle?
Yes. City Secretary, Ms. Ingram?
Y'all be safe.
Mayor and council, in our department, we had some exciting activity with the New and Blue Ticket Rider system that we've been working with the PD on. We should be completing our training on that within the next couple of weeks, so that we are up to speed with the PD when it goes live on February 10th. Fund View, we thought that Fund View was going to be initiated in March. Well, it's been catapulted to January, so now we're in the process of the transition for all four departments. Utilities will probably be the last one, just because of the data extraction that needs to be done in order for the billing to be processed. We should have Utilities live probably by March. That's our best estimate at this time. We've done our best to finalize our audit. Unfortunately, one error has, has just streamlined into previous and previous months. Joy and I did approximately five months' worth of trying to reconcile those bank balances for the pool fund, and we were not able to find the error. So at this point, it's out of our hands, and we've, we even had our consultant, Eddie Peacock, he's actually going to do the bank balancing for the whole fiscal year. At this point, it does look like he found the error, something that's going to close the gap that'll be acceptable for our auditors. He anticipates that, having that done in two weeks. Of excitement, Amy, our municipal court clerk, she's partnered with the City of Sherman to establish our juvenile diversion program for our city, which is a requirement. Unfortunately, we don't have enough volume in citations for juveniles to have an actual juvenile case manager, but she is going to be leading that. So I have had experience with the diversion program, so I'll be helping her spearhead that responsibility. We also had our Texas workforce audit this past month. It was completed and submitted successfully and on time. For this fiscal year, I always have a goal in mind for my department. It's been brought to my attention by several of the employees that our benefits packages, specifically our medical packages, is getting quite cumbersome financially. So I've been working with our police department and our fire department, scoping different cities to see what their benefits programs are, to see if we can't reduce the expense for the medical benefits, and actually get better benefits for our employees. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Mr. Walker, city administrator?
Mayor, council. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to Councilman Ingram for initiating a community-wide effort for the individual that lives on Hughes Street, who was, I think, he's a veteran of our community, and that kind of ignited also our Public Works Department. Justin went way above and beyond all those involved who did, or all that did. Justin even went and shopping for him and got some food for him. Y'all got some heaters, so that was a critical situation for that individual, and I'm very proud of the community effort, and I'm even more proud that it came from our leadership from the city.
We're not done. Justin and I have a meeting Sunday with another gentleman that he and I both grew up with, that when he got out of the military, he started a nonprofit that helps veterans. He's reached out to some of his connects. We have a meeting with the American Legion in Van Alstine Sunday at 2:00. Hope to get more information out on that, because there is a line of people. Hope to get more information out on that because there is a line of people willing and waiting to help this gentleman. We're just, it's, the weather slowed us down, but we've got this meeting on Sunday. We'll have more information on what everybody can help with coming soon.
Thank y'all. Appreciate that. Active Projects, Noble Ridge, Phase 1A, 171 homes. Connections Park, Noble Ridge, 1B, 177 homes. Ponderosa Point, we've got some commercial contracts that have been signed. NRP Group, you might see dirt moving up there. They're starting their multifamily project that's 300 doors. Grayson Meadows, we're waiting on them to revamp back up, 51 half-acre lots. Hilltop Ranch is a large development, 1,376 homes at Blath Road. I know we've heard from Blath Road over the years many a times, but this time it's going to move forward. You'll start to see some dirt moving this summer on their sewer plant on that location. So we could end up with two wastewater treatment plants. Wouldn't that be ironic? Howe Meadows received mud formation documents, that's 762 homes. Talbot Estates, 65 half-acre lots, that's on Old Highway 6. We're trying to work an annexation with them. Saddleback Homes, or Saddleback Development, that's seven homes. We're negotiating, as I mentioned, the annexation for Talbot Estates, which would require us to run a water line through Central Park. And we're very seriously looking into that. Of course, we were able to capture some park development funds this year, and we would use that, those funds to start developing that project. So all in all, that takes us to quite a population over the next number of years, just on these developments alone. Possible projects, we've been in, you know, serious discussions with Centurion for quite some time now, all waiting on wastewater and seeing which direction we go with that is, it's all hinging on that. Project 190 is a residential development at Enlow and 902. We've got a meeting with them first week of February. I had Anani LLC approach me initially about looking for a location for a concrete batch plant, and I had told them that we would find a location on a state highway somewhere to where it wouldn't disrupt our city streets and in not in a neighborhood. Well, they came back and indicated to me that they had purchased 81 acres between Abington Meadows and Boast Road, along Hall Cemetery Road. We have yet to be able to get anywhere on annexation, so right now they're telling me they're not doing a concrete batch plant, that they're doing a stone yard retail site. So we'll see how that goes. Permits, we've done nine single permits, six irrigation permits, seven new construction permits. On code enforcement, we've got two addresses on Castle Gate that have been notified that they have to remove their fences from our easement. We're about to replace or install a water line, and I say "we," it's the agreement with Saddleback who will be leading that charge, but their fences have been built on our property, so they're going to have to move those. There's been some pushback from them, but, you know, we will get this resolved. As far as the streets, I've turned in a list to Grayson County for possible street rebuilds for 2025. You know, after not doing any for 10 years, we've got a lot to do. We did four or five this past year, and we're going to continue to try to add four or five to that list every year going forward. At the top of the list is Smith Road, the north side of Smith Road from 902 to the S-Curve. So that was one that was submitted along with about six or seven others, and when we get those bids back, we'll see what we can do with our street budget to kind of place all of those together and see how many we can get done. Chief Sullivan mentioned Personnel. We'll go back to the leak. The most significant leak that took place was January 10th near US 75 and 902. It was a monumental task for our Public Works Department, considering the elements and the depth of the line. You know, I can't thank them enough for their steadfast determination. You know, I, you know, a lot of people think about heroes, and they don't often think about the guys in the ditches, but those guys in 16-degree weather and nothing but gloves and all of that, those are my heroes. And yes, we've decked them out with new gear, so all of their waders and everything is in. So if we snap any more pictures while we're in a ditch and it's very cold, we're going to make sure we have all of that on. And I told Dalton, that 80-pound gear, he's going to have to wear it in August. We're so proud of that. Wastewater, city staff, after last month's discussion, city staff has requested beginning documents from BVRT 2. I was told today that we would anticipate receiving those either tomorrow or by Friday for sure. Our Public Works Management, along with the mayor and I, visited with BVRT 2's management group this last week. They were able to drive around, look at some of the eye-to-eye situations, and look at basically the overall concept of our collection system and how it operates. As far as water, GTUA, they'll begin another repair tomorrow, so they'll be shut off in the morning, starting at 7:00 a.m. We have really stressed that they fill our tanks this time, because they failed to do so last time they did this. I think it was December 5th. But as of today, it was 25, it was at 25 feet at one point, and I'm not, it ended up getting to 30. So Jerry assured me today that we'll be okay tomorrow. As long as GTUA doesn't have some sort of a crazy issue on their end on the repair, we should be fine.
He didn't want me to call him this time?
Well, I think he got the word from both of us on that one. We had a meeting with Zenner Meters, and we're going to be moving to a more user-friendly meter, which is less expensive than a master meter. It's more friendly to our internal system as well. We're going to order, I think we put on order this afternoon, 40 of those new meters. So if we, you know, eventually you're going to have to replace all the meters in town. If we were to do that all in one lump sum today, it'd be $750,000. Obviously, that's not feasible, but what we can do is order the meter heads to place on the master meter bases, which is obviously way less expensive, and it allows us to go replace quite a few of them. So that's something we're going to be looking to as we grow and as we get on, these new homes need new meters. These new meters have 15-year warranty or 1.5 million gallons, so a lot of the cities around here are using those. As far as the audit, you know, Michelle touched on that. He did find a $40,000 error from 2021, and I think that'll get us in the game of getting us across the goal line, hopefully, but he's still got to reconcile each month of that 21, 22. So as she mentioned, we're expecting two weeks on a turnaround. Sales tax figures for January, $57,291.90, of which $14,322.98 is for the HCFDC. That's our Top B program. That represents a 19.52% increase from January 2024, so we're tracking in the right direction. Next week, I'll be requesting bids for construction for a comprehensive plan. I've submitted paperwork for the Resilient Communities Program grant from the Texas General Land Office for eligible activities. The deadline submitted is February the 11th, and the first public notice will be in the paper on Thursday. Well, that's for a different, that's for a different grant we're doing. Sorry about that. But we're expecting somewhere in the ballpark of $200,000 to $300,000 for funding for this comprehensive plan. It requires no matching, so we're excited about that. While I was speaking about the other grant, that's for the Young Street Grant that's been in process for quite some time. You'll see in the Herald Democrat on Thursday a notice out for bids on that. So we'll start looking at that here pretty quickly as well. Tuesday night, How Community Facilities Development Corporation will meet to finalize our strategic Looking forward to getting that done. And last but not least, I was recently asked by a company in Seattle to join their podcast. Now, it was, it's an hour-long interview. It's on the web. If anybody wants to hear it, let me know. I'll share the link with you. It's always scary when you put yourself out there in public like that, but I've had a lot of city managers from all over the country call me and reach out for support and things like that. So if you're interested in hearing that, let me know. I'll get that to you.
Monty did a great job. I heard it.
Thank you. Now, we do have this chlorine to chloramine change coming up as we move our water system to the west side. So it's just a matter of time when we feel comfortable moving forward with that. We can at any point, just about. Jerry, is that accurate? It's just a matter of when we want to pull the trigger on it. You know, we had, so we want to have enough time to get out in front, because the last time was such a disaster that we want to notify the public and give them enough time to be prepared for what's coming down the pike. Now, what this means is the west side would be on the same surface water as the east side. And if you remember, the last time, it ripped off all the sediment underneath the ground. Everybody was opening their faucets with red water and yellow water, and it was a giant disaster that we want to avoid. One good thing is, on the west side, the infrastructure's not as old as the infrastructure on the east side, so we're hoping that will lessen the blow. We're also hoping that since it's not traveling in a direct opposite direction, that, you know, it will kind of hinder some of that nastiness, but anytime you change from a chlorine to a chloramine, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have some scaling, and so I anticipate that. But we want to give ample notice to the public before we do anything in regards to
Does the council have any feedback on that?
I know some of the biggest concerns when we had the last conversion was with the schools, and Summit Hill Elementary is on that side of the highway. Do you have a plan with the school district to be able to at least be aware of it? Because those are little kids. I have a feeling those parents are going to be more mad than most if there's a problem.
And that's a great point. You know, we don't have to do this immediately. It might be best to do it in the summer, Jerry. I don't know if it's, if that's something they're okay with us, you know, waiting that long, but doing that project after school's out is probably a good idea. It's just our decision. Yeah.
Well, if we do it in the summertime, also if it's like after school is out, people might be watering their yards, washing their cars.
Good point.
That helps with the flushing.
So that's probably a good target, is to wait until the summer to do that. It's good input.
I think if we can wait, I think that's a good idea. I mean, what about the rest of the council? Anybody else have an opinion or feedback? I'd like to hear from you all.
I agree. I agree with the summertime.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we're going to, the newer homes are probably not going to be affected as much, but we do still have some older homes on that side.
Yeah. You know, the Western Hills area is always a concern with the AC line that they have over there. Who knows what'll happen when you introduce a new product on that AC line?
I say we plan for that unless anyone objects to that.
I do not object to more information and communication and allowing people time to plan and keeping this from being the fiasco of December 2022.
And maybe we could, as a city, we could try to, you know, let the public know that that's going to happen, and then start talking about it.
I think that's a great idea. You know, we're going to probably have some town halls coming up anyway, and, you know, that would probably be a dedicated town hall for something like that. So we'll take that information and we'll work out a plan for after school, but we'll work in that direction as far as guiding the public and letting them know what's coming, what's coming on.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All American Dogs gave a report. They've removed a dead cat, trail trap requested. You know, there's a, there's actually some detailed reporting from them, so that's good to see, but we did have an issue with a dog bite, which we, you know, you never want to see any of those things. I did call All American when that happened. They said they had a dispatcher in the area that he would do some drive-bys on that, and which he did, but I think the dogs were already pinned at that point. I know our police chief and Lieutenant Sparks went over there and had numerous visits with the dog owner and the victim, and it's basically a civil suit if it gets to that point, but we definitely don't want to see a situation like that. So with courts, you can see that we're starting to trend upwards as into normal numbers that were happening back in the 2021 era. So we're starting to see an uptick in citations for sure. Those guys are working it, and that's keeping Amy busy, not only with permits, but also with citations and the court work. Any questions for me?
One question. What's the difference between the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan? I thought they were both the same thing for some reason.
Yeah, the strategic plan is a little bit more scaled down. It's more based on marketing, and it's a direction, but it's not an outline as far as a strategic plan. Comprehensive plan is a detailed, intensive document, which includes land maps, future land maps, everything. I mean, it is, if you look at our comprehensive plan that was last done in 2010, 2011, I mean, that's about a 90-page book. What we get with the strategic plan will be kind of a scaled-down version of that, but it's a good starting point on a strategic plan, but it's not the all-encompassing document that the comprehensive plan will be.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right. If there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting stands adjourned at 6:49 p.m. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Michelle, do you need the council to sign this? I noticed that, okay.
Did she say no?
Yes, she said no.